This is the Dyton Conservation Commission calling the public meeting as of 7:02 for Thursday, May 18. This public meeting is being recorded, audio and video, and it will be broadcast and internet posting as www.dytton-dot-matt-mass.gov and YouTube. Would everyone stand, please? For the flagrant.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a mission under God indivisible with a deed in justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes for 4/20/23. Lisa, were we all set with that, with all the minutes, as they were recorded?
The minutes?
Yeah, from the previous meeting. We were all set with that.
March?
April meeting.
April meeting, yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the minutes for 4/20/23?
To make a motion, we accept the minutes for April 20th.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed. We have a hearing, it's a continued hearing from DI Trust, comprehensive subdivision which seeks to construct 135 single-family homes and 13,137 linear feet of associated roadway off of Forest Street, DEP file number 17-443. DI Trust has requested a continuance to June 22. Is there a motion to continue?
Motion to continue to 6/22.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have another hearing that has been continued. It's for Reed Brother Farms Limited Liability Partnership, DEP, file number 17-447. Outback Engineering has requested a continuance to June 22.
Motion to continue to June 22, 2023.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have an Enrad application by Dean Smith of New Leaf Dyton Energy Storage, One LLC for Zero Mained Lane, map one, lots 82 and 82-7 and 96, DEP file number 17-476. New Leaf has requested a continuance to June 22.
Motion to continue to 6/22/23.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have another Enrad application by RJR Properties, Zero Old Horton Street, map seven, lots 36 and 36-1, DEP file number 17-475. Ecosystem Solutions Incorporated has requested a continuance to June 22.
No, they did not. Charlie, wrong, wrong agenda.
That was a... Okay, that was a...
What did you do, intern?
Lisa, inform me on that?
Yep, I'll show you.
Yep.
So he's here.
He's the stand.
And then you could also modify the one here. Skip one down, skip one down.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, we're here.
Yes.
Okay.
Skip one down.
Let's see.
And then go to Robert Russell.
Okay.
And you can cross out ecosystem and has requested continuance. Actually, that was submitted by...
Tripods, two of them over there.
Not mine, though.
I'm still, I'm still...
Yeah, but just cross it off.
He's my tripod.
So we don't make the same mistake.
Okay, wait, we got this, okay.
You have.
Yeah.
I'll shield mine.
So RJR Properties, okay.
We have to drop this for... Right here. It's this one that Charlie just gave you. So you want to say, what's Mark Rodrick's business, Brandon?
Design Analysis Engineering.
Advanced Designs. I think it's ADE.
ADE, that's her.
Okay. So it's ADAs.
Okay, let's, let's...
But go back.
Okay, that's Old Horton Street, okay. Okay, Enrad application by RJR Properties, Old Horton Street, map seven, lots 36 and 36-1, file number 17-475. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Brandon Fannin for the Ecosystem Solutions. I also have with me tonight Chris Capone and Matt the intern. Giving you some updates and talk about the latest and greatest over at Old Horton Street with the Enrad that's been going on for a while now. The Conservation Commission voted to have originally Steve Schmeele do the peer review, but he didn't meet the insurance requirement, so Marta Nova was then hired. So Marta and I met at the site, oh, a couple of weeks ago, after she went out on her own, and we hashed a few things out with the wetland boundary. And they're shown on this new plan right here. You can see some crosshatched areas where wetland has been added to the plan, so some That's not the problem, though. We can accept the changes to the wetland boundary, but this whole property is within the watershed of the reservoir, which presents some unique problems with setbacks to leach fields.
I think, I want to correct you. It's not a reservoir, it's a surface water protection zone.
Okay.
Segregates it, it's a drinking water supply zone.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that means that any leach field has to be 200 feet away from any bank of any tributary that leads to a stream that is in that, that zone. And when Marta and I were out there, she thinks that she found a stream that is marked on the plan, which I currently have labeled as alleged stream, which I don't believe is a stream. And I, I just can't let it go because if that ends up being classified as a stream, this becomes an unbuildable lot. So Marta has her opinion, I have my opinion. This alleged stream is, what it is, is an old farmer's ditch that I'd say has been abandoned and has not been maintained for at least 80 years. The only thing that it has in common with a stream is that it's linear in shape, as most ditches are. It has standing water in it, but disconnected. There's no flow, there's no banks, scoured banks created through water flow as a result of gravitational flow. So what I'd like to do is I recommend that the commission come out there and look at them, look at it themselves, as opposed to not, Marta, because we're just going to be going back and forth forever, otherwise.
I saw flow there, Brandon, and I saw wood frog tad pools.
Well, there is a vernal pool behind 1798.
Well, there was wood frog tad pools in this as well.
It's dry now. So not only that, but in 2018, there were a couple of septic system repair projects that came across the commission's desk, brought forward by Mark Rodrick's, and the wetland delineated, was delineated behind those houses, which is the house is right over here. And no stream was ever delineated behind those houses.
Those houses were septic repairs.
Well, no stream was delineated.
Septic replacements.
Right, so that doesn't make it any different. If there's going to be a stream back there, it should have been delineated and shown on the plan.
Well, this is an Enrad, it's, it is different. Can I, are you done? Almost?
Almost.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So I, I think that the best way to break this impasse is to have the commission go out there and look at it yourselves and with your own eyes and come up with...
We are not the experts in wetland soils, nor wetland vegetation. Lisa is certainly our agent who is very knowledgeable in both.
But, but Mr. Chairman, this is not Lisa's commission, this is your commission.
The commission has voted in the, in the past to hire Armstrong Environmental to do this because of their accuracy and because of dealings that we have had with them in the past, which has been most appropriate. Now, I can understand what, what your thoughts are, but it is better, if this land is as, as low and as difficult to, to observe, that we really need an expert in the field, I think that we are going to stick with Beta and possibly...
It's Correction Nova Environmental, she's not with Beta.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I said, oh, I said it wrong. Nova Environmental, and, and to have the two of you truly hash it out.
I think we've already agreed to disagree.
If not, if not, what is going to happen is every time you wish to build a house, we are going to be requesting distances from various vernal pools, from stream beds, and it's going to be hashing it all over again. It would be better to get it done once, to get it done right, and then you can move on.
I'd like to present another expert witness, Mr. Chairman, as part of the record.
Can I speak briefly, please, first? Because we're not at the point of other people discussing yet.
Mr. Capone's part of the team.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Capone, I have Chris Capone with me, he's part of our team.
Okay.
I'd like to have him speak as part of our team.
Can, can we just back up briefly, please? Because the Enrad submission was to confirm, confirm the BVW boundary. Now, other resources have been found, so we have riverfront or possible riverfront streams, vernal pools, and so the Enrad submission technically really has to be revised, to submit it properly so that the other resources are included. Otherwise, we're still just reviewing the BVW. Am I correct?
Sometimes other resource areas are found. Does that mean you're looking for more fee? Because we're maxed out at the $200 fee for a single-family house.
So, yes, we need a submission that's complete, otherwise we're approving part of the resources. You guys filed the Enrad. We can't ignore the fact that there's other resources out there.
Right, and they can be put into the ORAD, should you choose, but I don't think we need to revise the application. And we go in knowing what we know, and if it changes during the process, it changes during the process. It doesn't mean we should have to change the application form. Usually the way this works is you, you go in and you hash things out either with the commission or the commission's consultant. This, the formality of this, I think, is getting to the extreme.
Well, our consultant ran out of money, that's another issue.
Not surprising.
The other concern I have is that we do need a PLS to stamp the plan. There's no PLS stamp on the plan. So I think before we try to hash it out with the consultants without our consultant, we need to have our consultant be authorized to be able to finish reviewing the project she started reviewing.
Correct.
So why is he not... So why is a professional engineer not allowed to stamp this plan?
A PLS to determine the correct boundaries and the, we don't know what was used to survey it. How was it surveyed?
Okay, could you use some commentary on that written down? Or should it happen before now? What's going to happen, Mr. Chairman, is we're going to end up disagreeing, and this is going to end up in appeal. That's, and it's unnecessary, it's really unnecessary, if the commission would just go out there and take a look at it yourselves. Because I think if you do, you're going to see there's no way this could be a stream.
If there's water and it's flowing in that direction...
Even if it's...
It seems like it certainly could be.
I have not seen any flow. I'd like to know if the other experts here in the room have documented flow and if there were any witnesses when they saw it.
I saw flow, I believe the health agent saw flow. It can be an intermittent stream and still be a tributary.
I, I disagree.
I would very much like to see Marty and you hash it out in the field, and we get one final solution and get it over with.
I'm willing to meet with Marty one more time in the field. Maybe we can come up with something.
That, I, I would, I would like that very much, rather than, than arguing over, you know, certain things and getting it done, then whatever you're going to build, you will, you will know the right areas to put it, rather than being too close to a stream or too close to a vernal pool, whether it being septic tank or whatever it is, because, you know, everyone has a different limit. You have 200 feet from a stream for the septic, 200 feet from the high water mark of a vernal pool, and, you know, you wouldn't have to worry about it, because you, you're going to have to do that later anyway. Once it's done, we know and we can just proceed smoothly with the next, with your next phase.
All right, could I still present, Mr. Capone?
Speak, please, yes.
Thank you.
For the record, my name is Christopher Capone, I'm a wetlands consultant, also the existing conservation agent for the Town of Westport. I observed the site yesterday with the owner and Brandon's and his representatives at the site. To the point of contention, which is this alleged stream, first of all, whether or not there were wood frogs in that area, it would not meet the definition of a vernal pool, because it was almost dry at the time of yesterday's site visit. There was no egg masses observed. A vernal pool needs to have at least three months of water continuously to have the species be able to propagate and make their life cycle. That isn't the case here. What I observed is a depression in the middle of a wooded swamp that had a linear fashion to it. There was no leaf litter disturbed to show that there was a channel at some time during the earlier rain events we had that would represent that this had enough flow to move those leaves aside. This basically is a depression in a wetland area, and if you didn't look twice, you would have stepped right over it and kept going beyond it. But in this case, the wetland does come much more significantly higher up to the road than what that channel does. So I'm here representing the fact that I do not agree that that has stream characteristics. I further don't agree that there are any vernal pools within that vicinity as the agent had expressed. Thank you.
Okay, certainly, it says in most years, there is water for that amount of time. We did have sufficient rain in February. Right now, we haven't had but a sprinkle for the past two, three weeks. And so what we had back in February has long sunk into the ground. I know the vernal pools near my house, well, out of three of them, two are dry. And, you know, maybe you should be there when, when Marty comes in and...
If they would like, I would be willing to be present.
If Brandon wishes to have you there, and then you can discuss such findings. Okay, that being said, we wish to continue funding for Marty Nova and request more funds for her to continue with you to get this resolved.
I think we have no choice.
Lisa, what was the amount that was on there?
I gave it to you, Jim.
Was it 1,850, 2,000? Okay, 1,800, $1,500. And that would be for the, the final site visit, and I will put it that way, so that you know that there won't be any more, and go from there.
Okay.
Okay.
Continued for one month?
One month.
Yep. All right.
June 22nd.
A motion to continue for June 22? Is there a motion to continue?
I make a motion, we continue to June 22 on RJR Properties.
Is there a second?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll stand.
Brandon, if you could just, someone could just fill that out, please.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
What? The agenda. I gave it to you.
Some new guys here. Hi, I'm Lisa.
I'm Matt.
Matt, nice to meet you.
Okay.
My address, address of the site.
I don't care. That's fine.
Okay.
That's Matt, the intern.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Got to learn a lot. Take care.
Okay, next on the agenda is Brook Street Solar, request for amended order of level design on behalf of GHTJAO3LLC, that's Grasshopper Energy, and the owner, the Manuel and Louise Andrus Trust, file number 17-404. The request includes expansion of work to include site plan modifications to expand the approved limit of clearing, new 14-foot wide gravel driveway extension, and a 15-inch RCP drainage culvert. Additional work includes tree trimming within the 100-foot wetland buffer zone.
Jim, I gotta reshoot myself from this.
Okay.
All right.
All right. So for the record, Nick Facendola, Level Design Group, here on behalf of the developer and applicant. So we're here on a continuance from the previous public hearing, where there were some questions regarding the proposed work and scope of work, most specifically within this area here, where the applicant was looking to trim, cut some additional trees within the 100-foot buffer zone. The other work is located up in this area, which is tree cutting, leaving of the stumps, and to provide a required fire containment buffer that the fire chief would like to see around the proposed battery storage system that will be included with the solar site. Majority of that area is already cleared and disturbed. What they're looking to do is construct a small gravel driveway to access the property to the west, as some additional clearing work will be done on that property, which is outside the resource area, to complete the 100-foot buffer around the fire, excuse me, the battery storage units. There's a, there's a swale that was constructed as part of the work, which carries runoff from the property to the west around the development, down towards an intermittent stream where a culvert was installed. That's why the 15-inch culvert's proposed, so we're going to have a little gravel driveway going over that. In the resource area that we're close to is an isolated vegetated wetland, so it's a local jurisdiction only, this is not a bordering vegetated wetland where it's jurisdictional under DEP. This is something that Town of Dyton specifically includes in their jurisdiction, so it's, it just nicks the 100-year, excuse me, 100-foot buffer zone with the proposed concrete pipe. I know from my colleague that was here before me at the last meeting, said there wasn't really any concerns about the work associated around the battery storage units and that clearing and cutting and the small little driveway extension. There was mostly questions about the tree cutting, clearing, and just the overall appearance of the site and when it's going to be finished. Site stabilization has not been completed yet. I know the town's looking to have that done. We've been coordinating with the Stormwater Committee on some issues with stormwater basins that the developer's been working towards. Stormwater Committee has a peer review of the stormwater basins currently ongoing. We haven't received that review as of today, but we don't feel that those items should affect the proposed requested minor modification. All the protections of the granted permits are still in place, so we're, you know, we still have to come back and do a certificate of compliance to close the site out. We're still working with Stormwater Committee on their end. You know, the site hasn't been energized yet, so there's still a lot of protections and things that will occur. The applicant's just looking to do this work for the battery storage units, along with the other work that's going to be done on site. They have secured a landscape contractor, and they're going to be getting out to the site to do their stabilization work. I believe a letter was sent to the commission, to the county of Lisa, regarding those dates, so that's all lined up. That should be going on in the next couple of weeks. It's going to take a few months for the site to fully grow in. Hopefully, the weather's good, but the stabilization may need to be reviewed at a further point down the road, depending on how the weather goes, how much rain we get, and if we can get enough growth over that time. But that's going to take time, the grass isn't going to grow, we're not going to stabilize 10 acres in, in three weeks. So I'll let Lisa discuss her comments on some of the tree clearing work. I know she had some concerns about discussions she's had with the developer and what was represented on here, and I'll let her go over those, and I have a few other comments I'd like to make after.
Before Lisa speaks, what, how much of this tree cutting and the rest is in the 25-foot no-touch zone?
In this area, there's supposed to be none. That's something that Lisa doesn't agree with, based on the flagging that was put out there. In this area, there's nothing in the, there's, like I said, the only work, this is the 100-foot buffer line here, we're just grazing that, so there's no disturbance within the 25-foot disturb zone up here. Up in this area, I believe there's likely a few trees, at least identified, that are likely within the 25-foot...
And who identified all these trees?
It was the developer.
Is he a botanist or...
No, he's not.
Or scientist, forestry scientist? He's not. So he wouldn't know exactly the wetlands, what kind of trees, or whatever it is then?
To my knowledge, no.
Okay. Lisa, you have...
Yeah, so I did a site inspection yesterday. I actually extended the deadline to receive additional information because I was giving them the benefit of the doubt. So I received this plan and the letter from Ahmed with orbital information regarding the stabilization. Stabilization is expected to be occurring by the end of June. However, the site visit revealed there were twenty-one trees that were tagged. However, there were a lot more trees than that tagged because whoever did the tagging used all blue. So I think they were either trying to relocate the wetlands or the twenty-five-foot no-touch. They used the same color to show which trees they wanted to remove, and they didn't label them, made it really difficult. But if I counted twenty, I could count twenty-one large trees that are closest to the panels. What I got is different than what was listed there. I got five beech, ten white pine, one black gum, and five red maple. And like I said, it was hard to decipher without labels and different colors what was the actual other flagging that was adjacent to it. And I did see, and Mr. Ferry was a witness to this because he went out with me as well as Dave Phillips went out as well, that there was gonna be cutting within twenty-five-foot no-touch. So that being said, I mean, I would recommend the commission request more information, request specifically what the square footage is, what exactly the trees are, and the twenty-five-foot no-touch to be staked or marked some way so that we can do another inspection. I still would like an arborist report on this, but...
Now, okay, that's on the left side of the map, correct?
On the south end of the site, yeah.
Okay, south end. So then on the west end, which is in the upper part of the map, where the, that the battery storage?
Mm-hmm.
Are there any problems that you saw there?
No, I had already reviewed that wetland delineation previously a few months back, and, yeah, I mean, it's, the boundary is correct, and the area, they wanna put the cover, it makes sense. And, but like we said at the last meeting, I think you guys share my concern about the site not being stabilized yet after being cleared greater than eighteen months ago. I mean, it was two years ago, yeah.
As we said last month, you know, if we give you permission to start cutting and you haven't, you know, you promised us everything, but if you haven't done what you should have done months ago...
Well, it's not him.
How much trust is there?
It's his developer, but it's not Nick.
Oh, yeah, it's okay, I'm here.
No, no, you know, I'm just throwing it out here, so...
I understand.
I'm not going at you personally, but this is what has to be brought to the developer.
No, we understand, and I've conveyed that concern to the developer, and like I said, they have secured a contractor. They're just working through some scheduling, and they are committed to getting them out there. I mean, as the project engineer, I've brought this concern up multiple times with the developer on how important it is to have the site stabilized as it impacts the entire site. So they are going to be moving forward with that work, and...
Okay, what I would like to see then is you two go back, reconfirm the, with new flags so that they can be identified which ones are for the trees and which ones, since, which ones are for the wetlands since everything is the same color, to be more specific in how many trees and the rest, and then we can deal with the other issues.
So through the chair, we'd like to make a request to remove this part of the modification from the request and have the commission only act on approving this part of a minor modification. And it's more or less due to completing of the site and functionality of the system. Yes, trimming some trees and cutting some trees will, you know, gain them some additional capacity on these panels here, but they can't turn the system on until they complete the stabilization, which is going to occur, finalize the drainage, and do this work. So if this was to occur in two years, it would be timely for the applicant. But they need to move on this as soon as possible in their efforts to finalize the site, complete construction, and be able to move forward with energizing the system, which is, you know, their goal, which is the town's goal, because that'll get everybody to the, essentially, the finish line. So if they can't cut the trees and we have to come back in a year or two under a separate permit with the proper information, we'll be more than happy...
Okay, so you want to remove that from this part of the application completely?
I'd like to strike that because of the issues that are outstanding. We know there's gonna be a decent amount more work. We have to go out there, survey those trees. I'd like to recommend that we get an arborist out there to identify the trees properly and to really nail down which areas, which trees we're gonna cut, final ground cover, and take care of all that work, and do it properly. And I apologize that it's been this back and forth on this issue. There's been some communication breakdown between us and the town, and, you know, we apologize for that. We're not trying to waste anybody's time, so...
Okay, so still before us then, if that were to be eliminated, still before us is a new fourteen-foot wide gravel driveway and fifteen-inch RCP drainage culvert. That's still before us.
Correct, and this additional clearing in this area, right through here. So detached area, trees are gonna be cut, and the brush is gonna be moved under there to provide that low vegetation fire buffer as required by the town fire department.
I'm gonna need a new plan to issue an amended order.
I couldn't hear you, Lisa.
I'll need a new plan to issue an amended order.
Yeah, and if we could do that with a condition, I would just essentially strike this note in this blob, and it would be the same exact plan with a new date.
Okay, so could you set up a new plan removing that part from the proposal and just leaving it, was it the fourteen-foot? That is satisfactory. Where is that roadway gonna be?
It's right here, it's a dark section right here.
Okay, and that's out of the buffer zone or...
I'm good with that, but we still need to take concerns from the rest of the community, too.
No, but we're set with the culvert, the fourteen-foot, and the back. Anyone on the commission have questions? From the, Lisa, Mrs. Gulat?
Nancy Gulat, Jim and Stormwater Committee. This came up at the meeting yesterday. What Nick has proposed, what Mr. Fassandola just proposed is totally new to me as far as removing that section in the west. The concern that was raised yesterday when that was still part of the plan was that, number one, what they had asked for originally was to be able to trim some trees to lower the tops because at certain times of the day, as the sun moves, the tops of the trees were shading panels. So that was trimming. Then what was proposed was actually taking down trees, and that's what Mrs. Caldonia alluded to, which is what now they're saying they wanna remove. You need to be aware that at the Stormwater Committee yesterday, prior to this, remove that western section, what we were concerned about was reducing the height of some trees is not considering land disturbance. But, again, with stormwater, reducing the height of the trees or trimming the trees to allow the sun to hit the panels, maximum sunlight, is not considered a land disturbance. You cut down trees, it's a land disturbance. The area is not, would actually be part of the original stormwater permit for that whole project because it's still on that Andrews Trust land. The issue that came up yesterday was, well, if you're going to cut trees that weren't on the original plan, approved by the planning board, don't you have to go back to the planning board for a modification? Now, Mr. Woods was at the meeting yesterday, and he seemed to think that were the case. So I'm just saying to you, another issue had been raised, and it would be a plan showing the trees.
You're talking about the land...
Not the fire break. I'm only talking about the parcel on the south and the west.
Where those dark squares are.
Yeah.
Oh, no, okay, wait, Nancy, why don't you turn around and... Okay, that there is gonna be eliminated. That's not gonna be, that's gonna be eliminated.
I understand that, and that's why I just said to you. I found out about that just now. That was not part of what the information was we had yesterday. I'm only making you aware that if they do intend to come back and it's cut trees, it's gotta go back to planning, I believe, at least for a minor modification because that has to show. But I will tell you this also, not to disagree with you, Mr. Fassandola, but in conversations I've had with the gentleman that I regularly speak to about this, Mr. Ahmed Hafiz. You don't need this up and running to get this thing online. You can do this without the fire break being completed if you get the drainage basins to work properly and you get the area that they're going to be putting soil down to control runoff and also get it seeded. They would like this to be part of it so that they'll be over and done with it. But I'm just stating to you emphatically, this can be done later. I said this almost two years ago. Get the basins working, get this up and running, you can generate electricity. And so has the building committee, commission has stated this. So I'm only here to tell you what happened yesterday, and what we said was, prior to hearing about this being removed, what we said to Mrs. Caldonia was, since you're going to your committee tonight, you take the lead on this, Concom. Stormwater will follow you. We are going to find out whether or not it has to go back to planning. So it's been removed for now, it doesn't have to back, doesn't have to go back to planning. However, I also wanted to correct a couple of statements, especially about the fire break. If for some reason that fire break weren't done now, but everything else was corrected, they could go online and generate electricity. So I just wanted to make that clear, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am, state your name, please.
Do you want us to go up there or is here okay?
Well, the microphone is here.
Lauren Bosilay, sixteen eighty Pine Street. Couple, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Alan Bosilay, sixteen eighty Pine Street.
A couple of questions about the, I know he just took it away, but just to ask you about this south side.
Would you like any answer to the question?
Yes, please.
I believe it's a handful, it all depends during the year. In the winter, when the sun's lower, you know, the shadow is deeper at this time of year. It's just a couple rows, but I believe it does extend all the way out to about, you know, maybe the fourth row out.
And in the wintertime, there's no leaves, so it...
It does, but the sun's much lower, and there's pines up through here, so, I mean, like, but I'm, for the record, I'm not a shading expert.
No, it's fine, thank you.
Those are just based on photos that I've seen of the site in conversations with the developer.
Well, the reason I ask is because the picture that was submitted to Concom showed one panel that was affected by it, and one row.
The photos were definitely wrong. It's not the same area.
Right, so my suggestion is, maybe you can get pictures to prove how much is being affected by it.
That is not gonna happen.
No, I know, but when he does propose it, if you...
Well, then that will be up to the commission to act then either one way or the other.
Okay, and you mentioned landscaping? What kind of landscaping? Did you, you just said you gave something to...
I mentioned a landscaping company's gonna come in and do the seeding, so they have to rake.
What seeding?
In the entire property. So there's a bunch of sticks and stones, so they have to come through, essentially power rake it, they're gonna add topsoil where needed, and then they're gonna hydroseed the interior of the site. That's the concern that was raised by the schoolyard and the commission members about this area. It's, there's no grass growing yet. This is supposed to look like a green meadow when the project's fully completed. I believe it's a wildflower mix, too.
Right.
Going through there.
You, for two years now, you were supposed to do forest enhancement. When is, when do you propose that to be done?
You know where we're talking about, right where we live, right? You know where we live.
On the east side and the north side?
Yes.
Supposed to be twenty feet of forest enhancement.
I know that there were trees...
For two years now.
Planted.
They died, some of them died.
In the bushes, and, you know, and that's an issue for the planning board. When we go to close the permit out with them, I know there's gonna be, there's conditions that are associated with that, and they'll all be hammered out before these guys receive their final sign-off to turn the system on.
Well, I know we...
They'll all be addressed, I can't say exactly when, but I will bring it up with...
Well, it's been two, it's been over two years.
We understand. I will bring it up with the developer, and I know the town is keeping tabs on all these items, and they're gonna continue to hold the developer accountable for those items until they're completed.
Nick, where's your work zone gonna be when you start cutting them back? Back trees back here on the back lot? Where's your work zone gonna be?
This is up here, the cutting is up here.
Right.
Yeah.
But where are the trucks coming?
Where's that massive chipper gonna be that was parked alongside my house? When you back up the trailers and fill them with chips, like a hundred feet away from our house?
Well, the site access is gonna be up through this area here.
So basically, it'll be where? Alongside our house again?
For the, I mean, yes, there'll be construction vehicles, tree cranes, things of that nature for the work, yes.
To get that thing.
But you cleared that whole lot, seventeen acres of land, and the chipper and the trucks were right here, right alongside our house, right? When we were told by the previous, not you, Nick, by the previous company that the work zone was gonna be up in here, right, not to affect us. You hear that big chipper?
Oh, it's eleven, it's yours.
Yeah, right there. Now, who do I contact when the dust is so bad that we can't even go outside? Do I contact you?
Who do I...
Who do I contact?
I believe you contact the town.
I contact the town?
And then they would follow up with...
All the...
Board of Health.
The Board of Health, all the subcontractors that you fired that approached me. I never talked to anybody. They call you. We're gonna be a good neighbor. We're not gonna work past five. We're gonna have water trucks. We're gonna take care of it. Don't worry about it. We're not gonna work on Sundays. They work past five, they work on Sundays. The dust is unbelievable. I asked them about power washing the house, bringing that thing? Nothing. I just wonder, who do I call? Over two years we've been northwards, who do I contact?
Is the dust still...
The dust is unbelievable.
All right, I'll coordinate that with the developer and let them know.
The mud in the street was so bad, we had dump trucks parked in front of our house, three at a time, waiting to unload, just sitting there, idle, right in front of our house. The mud was so bad, people drove on the north side of Road, down Pine Street because they didn't wanna go through the mud.
Yes, I believe that was part of the work that was done to repair the basins and deal with the concern.
Well, basins still need to be redone.
They, they're pretty far along, they probably will need a final cleaning for example, when the site's stabilized.
The last rain we had, the water's still in it, so it hasn't drained. And that was the last rain we had.
We know you're the project manager, but the people that are there are the ones that just blow us off. You, knowing from your company, has even said, hey, can we do anything for you? Is there something that can be done?
So are we gonna get a water truck when this happens?
And what happens?
When the dust and the dirt and everything, you can't sit outside? I can't have our grandkids out there?
We can add a condition because we don't want that dust going in the resources either. We can add a condition.
Okay.
I mean, but that is also a stormwater concern, right?
Okay, and we have, so you're saying you're gonna plant the grass? You're gonna plant all this stuff? But is this gonna be okayed and permitted and not shown to be growing? And because they said this two years... Because they said this two years ago, that they planted the grass.
That's why I went after him and when I said, we're not going to add on a lot more, we're going to, we're going to continue until old stuff gets done first.
Well.
Let's be honest, I mean.
No, I understand what you're saying, they're just, they could be playing games.
Well, they're hidden under the cloak of deception and deceit. This wasn't supposed to be there, that wasn't on any plans. They just moved their containers in without permission. Now they need the fire break to go further because they put them in the wrong spot. Now, was that an accident? Was it intentional?
They also added a panel, just to let you know. A whole row of panels was added from the original site plans.
Okay, that's.
So just to let you know that.
So these four containers.
So my point is, honesty's not the highest priority.
So noted.
So.
We can also condition that we want to see at least 80% coverage stabilization of the site by the end of the following growing season that, so usually within 60 days of seeding, you know, or when you're complete with the grading, right? You actually, you would see some stabilization, so you would expect that. Otherwise, they're going to need to straw it. So we'll require some straw. Few more conditions in there about site stabilization.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy? Do you wish to return?
The town has not been deceived. There has not been deception. The site has been monitored by numerous town officials, not only the stormwater committee. I understand the frustration. I got to tell you, I just heard something else tonight that I haven't heard since this project began. The mud in the road. I will tell you that if mud is in the road at a construction site, whether it's the building commissioner or the highway superintendent or the health agent or the stormwater agent, if it's seen, they go to the site and make them clean it. And if they're bringing it out of the site, they stop them and make them put in riprap. So mud in the street that was described tonight? I haven't heard that at a stormwater meeting. So I'm stating tonight, that's a new one for me. The other thing is, as far as the basins go, as was discussed at the stormwater meeting yesterday, we're waiting for the report for the third-party review of the original plans. To say the batteries were not on the original plans is not exactly true. They were not on the master plan. That's why nobody saw them. They were on the electrical plans, which you understand is part of the master plan. Had they been on the master plan, that issue would have been raised with the planning board immediately. So I don't want anyone to think the planning board missed something or they deceived us with this or anything else. When it was brought to the attention of town officials, that's when the town official said, you don't have permission for batteries. And the rest of this has evolved, including the best practices that were approved at the last town meeting.
Can I ask you, I'm going to ask you a question. There was a comment saying that they added an extra row of panels. Is that accurate?
Not that I'm aware of, because one of the discussions that we had, I'm talking stormwater now, following a site visit, I've been up there and walked through that with Busson, which's muddy and mucky. And I know there are places that the grass didn't grow, even though they got a special seed mix from UMass Amirist and everything else. To the best of my knowledge, note, one of the major concerns stormwater had was when the first, the basins that were not built correctly according to the plan had panels in them. And we said, there can't be panels in the basin. As you know, those basins never drained. They brought in a different construction crew, got rid of the other one, the other subcontractor, brought in a different crew, who were told, go back and build these basins according to the original approved plans. When they dug them up, they found rocks and ground-up stumps. So we all know why they didn't drain. That construction company said they built the basins according to the original plans. Yes, what we know is, a basin is supposed to have a flat bottom. What we know is that even after the basins did drain somewhat, they didn't drain completely. So on one end of the basins, there is water, which indicates either the bottom is not flat or that is groundwater coming up and not rainwater going down. So what we're waiting for is that third-party review, which is going to answer the question. Did this, I'll call them the second construction company that did the basins, did they build them according to plan? And that's what we're waiting for. So I can't tell you. I don't believe the problem we're seeing there with water is the original one, because obviously, they dug out all the rocks and the ground-up stumps. All right? I don't know exactly why there is water, but that issue of groundwater has come up. So the other thing I will state is, regardless of the nightmare, the neighbors alluded to regarding to the chipper noise, that is not the company that has been contracted to do this work. It's a local company just across the river, as a matter of fact. And what they're waiting for is to make sure everything else is okay. And that property up here is the property that grass off the bottom in order to be able to create the fire breaker for the batteries. Okay? So it wasn't a matter of deception, it was a matter of the first plan, the overall plan did not show the batteries. It was in the electrical plan. But the town's position was, the first plan, the major plan, I'll call it the master plan, should have had mention of batteries. All right? So I just want to correct some of the information you had and where we are with the stormwater committee. So as soon as we get that information, she's going to know what's in that third-party review, as will we. And stormwater's looking to work with God's division to get this resolved.
Thank you. Okay, so we will continue this, waiting for your new plan eliminating that portion of the project.
Through the chair. It's a, it's a five-minute task. I can have a plan to Lisa tomorrow.
I'm not in it again until after Memorial Day.
No, but I, but I.
Don't rush.
It's so minor. If we could approve this section of the work conditional to receipt of the final plan, it would just keep the process rolling. It's very, it's very straightforward and it's. I was just going to go and delete this and delete this, print a new plan, put a new date on it.
So if it's not received, say by the 29th, I'm in on the 30th. If it's not received, then we will not be issuing an amended order. How about that?
Hundred percent. I'll have it to you Monday when you're in the office.
Okay, well, she's on vacation now, so.
It'll be in a ring box.
Right, that would be fine, then she can deal with it as soon as she returns.
Yeah, yeah, I will. And when you send it to me, could you also send it to the stormwater agent, please, at the same time?
Sure, to Todd?
Yep.
Okay, not a problem.
Thank you.
Okay, a plan eliminating that. Okay, so what we have is the trees on the west side, we're going to have the new culvert and, well, there's three items, and the 14-foot excess to the batteries. Again, anyone else at the commission have any questions? Okay, since we've.
Could I just ask one more question? Did I hear you say you were going to leave stumps up there?
Correct. They're not going to pull the stumps because it disturbs the ground cover and you get erosion from that. So the goal is to just cut the trees, you know, leaving the stumps and they're going to clear bushes.
And you're planting grass around that and let it grow around that?
Yeah, anything that's, you know, they're going to try and leave as natural as possible, but if anything does, these areas where we're grading, that'll be seeded properly. But anywhere, we're going to try and leave as natural as possible.
It's really just trees we're trying to reduce because of the fire, for fire protection, yeah.
In large bushes, yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion for the amended order to, for this project? And by amended, I mean it's no tree cutting on the south side.
Motion for amended continuance.
No, not a continuance, it's a.
To issue an amended order of conditions.
Amended order of conditions.
Motion to submit amended condition.
Orders of conditions.
Orders of conditions, sorry.
That's okay. After we receive a revised plan by May 29th, if that plan is not in hand, I don't know if you want to say all this, but we will deny the amended order request.
You just made that motion, right?
Yes.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I can second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I can say aye twice.
Bill? Did you vote on this?
I did, I said aye.
Okay, thank you. Unanimous.
Thank you for your time, and we're going to continue to work with the town and the stormwater committee on these other issues and convey the concerns of the abutters to the developer and have them reach out.
Lisa, on the next one, this is the Old Horton Street. Is that on, on Robert J. Russell?
No, that's continued per Mr. Rodrick's of ADE. ADE requested a continuance to June 22nd.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a notice of intent application by Robert J. Russell III at Zero Old Horton Street, map seven, lot 36, for construction of a single-family house with septic system. A portion of this work is within the buffer zone to wetland resources. DEP file number 17-481. ADE Systems has requested a continuance to June 22nd. Is there a motion to continue?
Motion to continue to 62223.
Second, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
For the audience, that is a possible house lot up on the land where we're going to have it checked up on Old Horton Street to verify whether there is a vernal pool and stream on that larger posse. So until we evidently find out for sure, that would certainly affect the construction of such a house. Okay, a notice of intent application by Kevin Prairie, 2192 Maple Swamp Road, map one, lot 4-1, for construction of a single-family, five-bedroom house with associated grading, septic system, and well within jurisdictional resource areas. A portion of the work is within the regulated 200-foot vernal pool buffer zone.
Good evening, gentlemen. Mount Hope Engineering, project manager. James Hall, Mount Hope Engineering, project manager for Kevin Prairie on Maple Swamp Road. We were before you previously, and I think we were actually going to leave it, that Lisa was just going to have to get out there. Since then, it was brought to our attention that we need to be 200 feet from the vernal pool, not 100. I did read the regs, I'm struggling with it a little bit on why that is, but.
Okay, the vernal pool, under our bylaw, the vernal pool is 100 feet from the high water mark. So if the water, it goes this far, we plus by the vernal pool, we know. Now we take an additional 100-foot jurisdiction from that line.
Okay.
Only for septic systems.
Only on leach field septic systems. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So since we heard that, we revised the plan. We were about 170 feet away prior, so we now have revised the plan for you tonight to meet the 200-foot. I believe everything else was discussed prior at the prior meeting.
Okay, the septic system was over here before.
So this is all within the accuracy, Lisa?
Yeah, I took a, I did a site visit out there, actually, me and Mr. Reynolds did a site visit. And we concur with the wetland edges. So since then, the markers have been purchased for me already and placed at the 125-foot. Yeah, I don't have any other concerns about this one. I actually already drafted, they requested that I draft the orders so that they could record them and get moving. So I got one less thing to do when I get back.
Okay, so everything is within jurisdictional correctness?
Yes.
Has everyone had a chance to look it over?
The mound-free Fuji box system, is that right?
Is it what?
One of the moundless Fuji box septic tanks?
No, this is not, that was the other one I was here on. This is conventional leach bed, pipe and stone.
Yeah, but this is, this is. So there's 100 feet and then another, there's another 100 feet beyond that. So this complies with our bylaw. Any questions from the audience, from the members? From the audience? Do I have a motion to issue an order of conditions?
Motion to accept order of conditions.
Issue.
Issue, I'm sorry, on 2192 Maple Swamp Road.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I do need you guys to sign two of these, because one's for our records. I didn't put lines or anything, but if you just sign names. Sign both. And there's a 10-day appeal period, you know that. Mr. Prairie, you know about that.
10 minutes for the fire, stop the fire and the salt.
Nice of you, I like that. You buy it or you steal it, folks?
This was a donation.
A donation.
Yeah. Lights up, but I don't know how it died.
It might feel a little hard, please.
Okay, moving on.
Oh, Bill, there's two copies, sir.
Thank you. And the reason we're doing this, because it's only approved under the local bylaw. The Wetlands Protection Act didn't come into play because they're outside of the 100-foot buffer zone. And the isolated wetlands don't fall under the Wetlands Protection Act.
And I am. Do we record them with the registry?
Yeah, they still get.
They'll file them?
Yeah, they'll still get recorded because there's all the property information at the top.
And that would above certificate of compliance with the situation.
Yeah, I think you're just going to send an email or write a letter to us, we'll see what happens. Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
Okay.
And if you have any questions about these, let me know. But again, I am on vacation next week, or vacation, work vacation. Pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Okay, we have a continued hearing. It's a notice of intent application by Robert Martin at 1035 Williams Street for an after-the-fact permit for garage site improvements, including a driveway landscaping, above-ground pool clearing and grading of dead trees, as well as some invasives, a new fence and restoration. clearing, and grading of dead trees, as well as some invasives, a new fence, and restoration plantings. A portion of the proposed work is within the regulated wetland buffer zone, DEP file number 17-480. No one representing. Lisa, were they-
They requested a continuance yesterday. This is for 1035 Williams, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to continue?
Motion to continue to 62223.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
A notice, this is a new hearing, a notice of intent by Charles Rudolph, 2696 Pleasant Street, for a septic upgrade within the buffer zone of a bordered, bordering vegetated wetland, as well as land subject to coastal storm flowage.
Oh, thank you.
This might be a Fuji. Might be.
For the record, my name is Rainey Gagnon with Zenith Consulting Engineers.
What, what company?
Zenith Consulting Engineers.
I'm just going to trade plans with that one sec, please. I have another one to go.
Rainey, repeat your second name.
Gagnon.
All right, where are we, on Pleasant Street?
Okay.
Down past beach, on the west side.
On the west side of, the west side of Pleasant Street.
That's east-west, what?
West side of Pleasant. Okay.
East side.
Yeah.
West side.
Yeah, we're on the west side of Pleasant. Okay. Yeah. All right.
I can say it again.
Okay, what do we look at?
It's Rainey.
Rainey.
Gagnon.
Hell, he's right up against the-
And last name?
Gagnon, G-A-G-N-O-N.
Okay.
Okay, so like we said in the introduction, we're proposing to do a septic repair on the, on the existing three-bedroom house located at, I think it's 2696 Pleasant Street. We have BVW that runs from the northeast corner of the property and wraps all the way to the southwest. So it runs from here all the way down. The entire property is located within the Zone AE from the Totten River, which is subject to coastal storm flowage. Basically, what we're proposing to do, there's an existing pool behind the house, and we're going to take that pool out and put the new leach field in that location. So the buffer zone, all the work is within the buffer zone, but we really didn't have a lot of area to work with. Almost the whole lot is, is within the buffer zone, with the exception of the southeast corner, but that's where we have the water service, and we're actually close to the property line there, too.
Yeah.
So this was really the, the best location for the new system. But that's pretty much it. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Oh, I can add one more thing.
No, this is going to be a traditional system, it's not going to be a, a-
This is not a treatment system now, this is just a standard-
Traditional system, okay.
It, it's not a stone-and-pipe system, though, it isn't, it's a, plastic arches in a, in a sand bed.
Okay.
Relatively new house, Mr. Gagnon?
Actually, I don't know how old the house is.
I would, it's a raised ranch, I would say probably within 30 years or so.
But the perk tests were all, like, really sandy soils, really high perk rates, and I can add that I do believe that we received approval from the Board of Health for this, for this design.
Yes, you did. Yes.
I believe that was today, but-
Yeah.
Any questions from the commissioners? Anything from the audience? Okay, let's have a, a vote.
So, you know, because this is a repair, and the wetlands are pretty far away from the project, I wouldn't propose that we do any posts or anything like that, you know, with the placards. I think if you did that, they'd end up being like so far into the shrubs, so when this went, one, I'm not going to require that unless you guys want to, I mean.
We'll, we'll go with yours.
What is the closest point to the septic system?
It is 69.5 feet.
Yeah.
That, that's going to be adequate.
Yeah.
In such, well, in that location.
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a, a motion to approve?
I make a motion, we approve septic repair at 2669 Pleasant Street.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. You're all set?
So I do have 21 days, you have a 10-day appeal period, and I have 21 days to issue the order. Again, I'll vote next week, I will have them down the following week for you.
Thank you.
And should we mail them to you? Pick them up?
I think mail would be fine.
Mail, okay. Thank you.
Okay. A request for determination of applicability, 1551 Somerset Avenue, for improvements at the park. Work includes resurface existing parking area with new previous asphalt paving, reconfigure existing picnic area to include buffer to the wetland area, implement additional stormwater BPMs. Work is proposed within the buffer zone to a bordering vegetated wetland and within land subject to coastal storm flowage. This is, again, this is a request for determination of applicability.
Good evening, everyone. Kevin Smith, Dayton Parks and Recreation Commission.
Hi, Kevin.
What we have before you is, is largely a resurfacing of the existing parking lot area at 1551 Somerset Ave., which is our, where our basketball and tennis courts are. In developing the plan, what we're proposing is kind of going above and beyond and making some repairs to mainly the picnic, I think, I believe the picnic area is the only actual piece of the project that's in the 25-foot buffer. So what we proposed, and you can see on the rendered drawing, is that we're actually going to shrink its width and make it longer, but also makes it more accessible to the parking lot, and then we'll also-
You're not going to paint, that's just going to remain as grass and-
Well, actually, it's better if you don't mind, I want to look in and talk. So, right now, it's a stonedust area. By shrinking it, we're going to increase in this area between the wetlands, and there's actually a small stream there. We're going to actually restore the gra, the grass buffer, so we'll make sure that we do have a 25-foot grass buffer there. Also additionally, we have, you have my, the page. So off the parking area, we're going to do, implement this storm, stormwater BMPs, just to decrease any chances of any contamination coming off the parking area. We're also going to be using a permeable surface, so we're just going to use like the asphalt binder. The, the project itself doesn't even really trigger stormwater, it's only 9,100 square feet, but we're just going to take the opportunity to try to protect the wetland areas that are abutting the property in the process. Also, too, and this is something that we'll have to probably do through a site visit, we also proposed removing the invasive Japanese knotweed on the back end of the property, and restoring some native plants there. At any point, I mean, we'd be happy to, it's, it's tough to tell off of the rendered drawing really how it all lays out, but we'd be happy to stake it out and, and conduct a, a site visit. It might translate a little bit better onsite than it does on paper.
Any of the commissioners have any questions?
No.
Nope.
Anyone in the audience have questions? Okay, this vote here, it's a request for determination of applicability. There are two choices, a negative or a positive. A negative gives them the go-ahead to do their project, whereas a positive determination would require them to file a full notice of intent, and, wow, that's it. Okay, do I have a motion for-
Do you want to know what I have to say? So I think it's great, I, you know, Kevin worked with the permitting and compliance team group, and really brought this park to a different level, it's going to be really nice. But I'd be happy to be, I just want to let you know, I'd be happy to be involved with, like, the invasive species removal, and making sure that, you know, the guys, DPW guys, know exactly what they should and shouldn't be touching, and stuff like that, so don't feel like you're on your own about it, you know?
No, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem. It's good stuff, improvement.
Is, again, a negative determination means that they can commence work right away? A positive determination requires them to file a full notice of intent and, and lay it all out even in more detail. Do I have a motion?
Motion to submit a negative.
Determination.
Determination, I was thinking.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Again, I have 21 days, and I'm out next week.
Yeah, I, I won't see planning until June, so.
Oh, all right.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
We have a request by Joseph Baptista for one-year extension on amended order of conditions for 2162 Horton Street, file number 17-433.
And this was omitted from the previous meeting. It was overlooked. In any case, that needs to be done.
Okay. Is there a motion to issue an extension to the order of conditions?
I'll move that we issue, extend the order of conditions.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, request by John Paul Thomas for a certificate of compliance at 0 Old Somerset Avenue, map 9, lot 21-3. That is a DEP file number 17-293. The order of conditions has lapsed, and is therefore no longer valid, and the work regulated by it was never started. Lisa, would you explain to the commissioners how that unfolds?
Yeah, so this site was previously approved in 2008, and it was going to be a commercial development on, on Old Somerset Ave. So it was, the lawyer reached out to me and said, hey, this never happened, my client wants to sell it. So how it works is you, I conducted a site visit on May 10th, confirmed that there was no alterations to any resource. And in fact, the site was never developed. So we issue under section B an invalid order of conditions. And I drafted it, he was actually supposed to come to the meeting tonight, I have two copies, because I was going to hand him one if you guys approved it, because they have a closing.
Okay, so our vote then is to issue a certificate of compliance that, that has qualifications.
Yep. Valid, so.
Why would we issue a certificate of compliance?
Because it's registered, it's on the deeds, it's on the deed that, that the, he's going to do work, and so in order to sell the property, he has to have a resolution.
Okay, that's, that's why.
So we have two, three choices, car show complete certification, invalid order conditions or ongoing conditions, so the only one that makes sense is B. But you guys have to vote.
Okay, is there a motion to issue a certificate of compliance?
I'll move, do we issue a certificate of compliance?
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's-
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm left in China.
Essentially for work not done, but so it can, he can move on with-
Have to print it, too. It's a good thing, because nobody would ever recognize that certificate.
I'm a doctor, don't you know?
See, it's because of guys like you, we have to do it twice.
Okay, Charlie, you're going to have to check on the old Horton Street for that check coming in for Marty, the 1850. And then put in the 53G, and now will you notify Marty that she is to meet with him, and whoever he wishes to bring?
Boy, I like this pen.
I can give this pen to you, Charlie.
Just got one here?
Do you like it that much, Charlie?
Nice and fat, when you have a-
Well, Father's Day's coming up, so when you give a Father's-
I'll have to buy it for myself.
It's your pen.
There, there you go.
You're going to sign this one, too?
Sure, right, I can-
I need two copies.
Got more than one pen.
Paul, could I, can you do me a favor?
Sure. David, I love you.
A copy with you, and you, you put it in an envelope, address to him, and then if he contacts me, well, I'll-
How old is your dad?
Eighty-six.
Absolutely.
Eighty-six.
He's three years younger than me. Thought he was older than me. You should be charging for that service.
Okay, while you're signing that, I'm going to go on to Bill's payable, Gay and Gay invoice 74363, the amount of $400.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to pay the bill?
Motion to pay the bill, $400 for professional services, Randy.
What, what, what 0 Hart Street was this $400 bill for?
This is a Gay and Gay bill.
The what?
Gay and Gay.
This bill is for Gay and Gay for lot 2 of Hart Street.
Yeah, what's lot 2 Hart Street?
Okay, I have to sign it.
I need to know.
It was Mr. Rodrick's property.
Well, why, why did we need Gay and Gay on Mr. Hart's property?
Prove it, you can sign them all afterward.
Okay, I, I can, all right.
Okay, they're right right here, you can do that afterwards.
Okay.
I've got them right here.
Yes.
I believe Bill has a question.
Lisa.
That was for-
Why did we need Gay and Gay on Mr. Rodrick's property?
Because there was a violation, and he wasn't willing to file a notice of intent with us. His lawyer reached out to us, and then he had to get town counsel involved.
Through, through Mike, Mike got him involved.
Mike got him involved.
You, you can only speak one at a time. If you both speak together, I don't get it.
Go ahead.
Mike, because of the problem with the parcel on, down the road from you, he didn't want to file, and he contacted Mike, and Mike contacted Gay and Gay to intervene, and this is the price of intervention. Okay.
He filed, complying now.
Okay, is there a motion to pay the Gay and Gay invoice of $400? You made the motion.
I did make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have an invoice, 1032, from Nova Environmental Consulting.
You used mine, you have it right.
Well, this, I got three of them here.
Yes, a lot of different.
Okay, all right, here we go.
You all the trouble of printing that, and you don't even read them.
I have, I have three different-
Well, you should only have one. Mine, that comes to mind, is the issue. Yes, but I have double.
Every item.
And you missed this.
Because you, you didn't have it in the earlier edition.
It's the final edition, the one that counts.
But I don't have time to read it when you come in here, two minutes off. Okay, we have an invoice, 74, let me see, which one was that?
74362.
Two, in the amount of $626.57 for professional- Two, in the amount of $626.57 for professional services rented in the Strawberry Fields Appeal. That's to Gay and Gay. Is there a motion to pay that?
Make a motion, we pay Gay and Gay.
626.57.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have an invoice from Nova Environmental Consultants, 1032, in the amount of $1,423.36 for professional services in an Enrad review of Zero Old Horton Street.
Motion to pay invoice 1032 in the amount of 1423.36 for professional services rented.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no, that's, that's the next one. That's the next item.
Okay.
LMB Constable Services invoice 701 in the amount of $60. Is there a motion?
That's what that is, do you?
Yeah, what's up for you?
Okay, this is the, rather than mailing, we have direct delivery of enforcement orders, our, our special notices. So it's probably cheaper than going by the mail and it's more direct. We get the answers and the signatures within.
Always had that option.
But now there's a charge, the police don't deliver anymore like they used to.
Make a motion, we pay invoice 701 to the LMB Constable Service, $60.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Beta Invoice Number One in the amount of $3,742.28 for professional services rented in the Strawberry Fields Appeal.
Make a motion, we pay invoice number one to Beta for $3,742.28.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, Beta Invoice Number Four in the amount of $2,234.23 for professional services rented in the Enrad review of 1136 Briggs Street.
Make a motion, we pay invoice number four, $2,234.23 for 1136 Briggs Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, all of these are in here for me to sign, Lisa?
Yes.
Okay.
They're here for you to sign.
All right. Next, we have a commission agenda updates and discussion, 1566 Cedar Street. It was an enforcement order issued, 1272022. It was the restoration of the freshwater wetlands and the zero to 50-foot no build zone. All work shall be done in accordance with the DCC approval. Since that time, fines have been issued. The commission has, had voted since there was incomplete plans received from North County Group and, which was, came in on 5/3/2023. Plans not complete, does not meet the performance standards of the boarding vegetated wetlands under the Wetland Protection Act. Prior to the DCC, the fines have been issued by the conservation agent and must be ratified by a vote by the commission. Now, we had already voted to fine. What I want you to do is to validate that when, so that, so there's no discussion about it, to validate that when we issued the fine, we are authorizing our agent to sign the fine statement.
Correct.
Is there a motion to, to validate Lisa signing the fine order? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to sign it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Okay, and that is only to, to eliminate any problems that people might have, but we essentially did that in the past and, again, that's to validate it. Yes, sir?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Leonard Hall. I am here this evening as a member of the Board of Selectment. Today, I met with Town Administrator Mike Mullin, who after speaking with Town Council wanted me to advise the Conservation Commission that the party before you this evening has retained legal counsel. Both TA Mullin and Town Council are concerned that the 14th Amendment due process rights of this party before you may have been violated. Both TA Mullin and Town Council request that Conservation proceed with caution on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Lenny.
Evening. John De Souza, North County Group. And I am here to let you know that the last vote that you just took violated the open meeting law. Therefore, it is null and void. That will be part of the suit, that will be brought into the town and going against the Conservation Commission.
It was posted on our agenda.
My client has not had due process on any of these violation notices. Therefore, that will be another item that'll be on the lawsuit against the Conservation Commission. You guys have not held, upheld your portion of the previous meeting that we were here when you issued an order of conditions for the building of the structure that my client wanted. We were told that the building permit was going to get signed off, it never was. My client recorded the order of conditions as, right after they came in. We have a copy of that record. We sent the client to Lisa's office to get the permit signed and she would not sign off on it. Therefore, the building was never added onto. We, when, we staked out the location of where the house was supposed to be, we staked out the location of the hay bales were supposed to be, all per that hearing, which never happened. We submitted plans to the commission.
Sorry, which hearing that never happened? I'm sorry, no.
No, no, no.
We closed the public hearing.
Listen, this, I'm speaking now, not you.
We closed the public hearing and issued an order of conditions, we did.
Yes.
And we also issued an enforcement order that you received.
And they were recorded. Everything was recorded per the hearing that we had that night.
He signed off on your order.
We have the order and it's recorded, just like we said it was going to be.
Enforcement order, you received the enforcement order. I handed it to you and you signed it in my office.
And I said yes.
Okay. He said he never received it.
Who?
Mr. Mortoso.
Well, but you never sent it to us directly.
Why don't, why don't we let him finish?
It was hand-delivered to your representative, that is legal.
We received the order, I stated that, yes.
Okay, good.
There's no and ifs or or buts about it, it's pretty easy.
The enforcement order and the order of conditions at the same time.
Yes, we received both of them.
Right.
Yes. No, no qualms on my end. So we recorded the orders of conditions as we said we would at that last hearing. Then when it came time for the building permit, no, Lisa would not sign off on the building permit. To this day, she hasn't signed off on the building permit. We had produced plans and I have emails that went back to her office and we actually left multiple copies of that plan at her office. And actually, I'm kind of surprised that that plan is even here. But that plan is only here because the last time I went to the office, I had a witness with me. So we have, and I have all the records and I have all the emails to prove that the plans were emailed prior to these enforcement violations being handed out. So I want to know is, what is the commission going to do going forward? Because right now, my client is at his wit's end. He's retained counsel and we are going to fight these violations in court. And if my client wins on the violations in court, he is going to sue the commission.
We gave you permission to build the addition. That you have, we gave you permission.
Right, but it was never exercised on the building permit, she will not sign off on the building permit. Therefore, we cannot obtain a building permit.
The commission gave you the permission to put up the structure.
Exactly, but on the building permit, Conservation has to sign off on the permit. She never signed off on the permit.
That be us giving the commission, giving the permission the same as, as. As far as I'm concerned, you've got permission to build it.
But if the agent does not sign off on the building permit application, the building department does not issue.
Oh, that's not true. We have seen that happen elsewhere.
We can't build.
Don't get a, he doesn't get permission to build.
We don't get the permit.
Got to get a building permit, he gets no building permit.
He gives out building permits even without her signature?
Well, he wanted her signature and she would not sign it. To this day, it's not signed and my client still does not have the building permit.
Are we talking about the violation because under?
No, no, we're talking about the orders of conditions.
On our agenda.
We're.
Under commission agent updates and discussion, 1566 Cedar Street is there to discuss the violation. So we have two pages of timeline here where we started with Mr. Mortoso on April 8th, 2021. Now we are at May 18th, 2023. Here's everything right here. This is all the communication, email, site visits, communication with the previous wetland scientist.
Those weren't about the house. Those were about other.
No, but the, the house was approved by you guys the same day we issued an enforcement order.
But I don't understand, if she, if a building permit can't be issued without your signature, we, we allowed the house, why not sign?
Sure, I'll sign off on the building permit application, but we, we requested at the same time that an approvable plan be submitted for the violation. That has not happened. That has not happened.
Email from the building department. Your application for a building residential permit located at 1566 Cedar Street is being processed. The following message has been sent for your review and action needed. Enforcement order was issued on the application of 12722, order specified restoration of freshwater wetland, wetland and the zero to 50 no build zone. All work shall be done in accordance with the DCC approval and restoration plan and conditions issued by the DCC. Enforcement order specified for the requirement that the applicant submitted restoration plan by February 2nd, the date we have not received the restoration plan. They're not signing off on the building permit. And they haven't been.
Water health, isn't it?
Well, I don't sign.
No, everybody signed off except the Conservation Commission.
If you guys vote to have me sign off, I will. However, we need to stick to the agenda tonight and the agenda is discussing the violation. We're talking about the plan that was submitted.
If signing off is going to prevent a lawsuit, then signing off is what it will be.
I'll sign off, however, we received this plan that we are supposed to be discussing tonight, this restoration plan.
Okay, we can, we can do both. We can get the signature for the building.
Sure. Maybe you could go in Monday and sign, sign off on that.
So that's, that's one issue that we voted to.
You could sign on my behalf because I'm not here next week.
Okay. Did you hear that?
I heard that and I've heard that before already once as well.
What did you hear before?
At the last time when you guys issued the orders of conditions, that she was going to sign off on the building permit application, which it never happened.
Well, you just heard that I'm, since, since she will not be here, I will go in and I will, I will sign it, I'll go to Jim Agria's office and I will sign off on it for you. That's the building?
Yes.
Okay, that's taken care of. Now what we're dealing with is the enforcement order on the wetlands and the reconstruction, reconstitution, if you, if you will, of the wetlands.
Well, it's not a reconstitution, it's a mitigation.
Mitigation, okay. That's, that's the proper word.
Restoration.
Okay. I can't.
Eliminated one problem?
Well, if it gets signed on Monday, you'll eliminate one problem. Yes.
Okay. We just want to write it down, that's all.
Nice pen.
That's William Street. Okay. We have not seen much in the way of mitigation for the wetlands. You have approximately 10,000 square feet.
Well, as was previously talked about, a lot of that previous disturbance was there before my client purchased the house.
So he bought the problem?
Well, it doesn't always work that way. So there's a little statute in Massachusetts that states if you purchase a house and the Conservation Commission does not go after the previous owner, three years after you purchased the house, you, as the new owner, are not responsible for the prior convictions.
We're listening.
So if you look, and that was brought out to trial in Massachusetts, Town of Norton versus Smith, back in 2019. Where they went in favor of the people that just had purchased the house, where the commission was trying to do the same exact thing as you guys are trying to do to my client. Make him responsible for a prior conviction that he had no relation to. And after the three-year statute of limitation ran out, the court found in the defendant and reversed every single charge that the commission was bringing to him, awarded the guy fees for all sorts of stuff and the commission lost big time on it. And right now, you're in the same boat.
No, actually, that is for clearing, not, there's no statute of limitations for filling. There's fill in the resource and there's no statute of limitations for filling.
Nope, absolutely wrong. I would challenge you a million times.
Well, I have it in writing from DEP, there's no statute of limitations for filling in the, in the wetland resource. So we're in a wetland and there's fill, we're not talking about just clearing vegetation.
What fill is in there?
What do you mean what fill?
I walked that property many, many times.
We have a plan from CENIF Engineering that shows there is a padd, there is partially paddock, there is a riding rink, there is a pile, multiple piles of.
Those are the same pictures that I had shown the commission that were there for previous owners.
There's no statute of limitation on fill. So you bought the fill that someone else played and placed in a wetland.
That is absolutely wrong and that was proven in the Norton case just four years ago.
Is this the plan you're trying to submit to us dated?
That's the plan that I've been trying to submit for months, but all of a sudden I don't get no reply emails or anything.
2022. Okay.
It should be a one sheet.
The chairman and I, yes, the chairman and I have looked at this plan numerous times now. You're trying to propose 41 high bush blueberry and 12 choke cherry.
Yep.
All right, that's 53 plants. Choke cherry are not even a wetland plant.
It doesn't have to be a full wetland plant. It's in a buffer zone.
No, it's not. You actually, if you really look at this plan and you compare it to the one that was submitted by Zenith Engineering.
You look where the wetland line is on there. That wetland line was, was previously shown and we had brought that up at the previous hearing. And it was stated right here by more than one person.
It's not accurate. It's inaccurate. In fact, you have different flagging numbers. You have a different location. You have different areas calculated as Zenith Engineering had.
This is the previous.
Not to mention, you don't show the soil stockpile that's actually in the wetland resource. You don't show the location of the paddock. You just point to the area.
This is the whole lot. This is just a portion of the lot.
No, you just point to it. You don't have the paddock on the plan.
No, it's on the plan and it's actually on the previous plan. If you remember, the previous plan.
Show us where, show us where it is. It's not here.
The previous plan that was talked about, that's the, just the planting plan that you have in front of you.
The previous plan is the one that was submitted that I gave you a year and a half ago.
The previous plan that we talked about at the hearing, that the orders of conditions were approved upon, that had two sheets to it. It had sheet number one that showed the entire lot. It showed all the wetland resource areas, which was verified by the commission at that hearing. When you looked at the little Zenith plan and you looked at my plan and you figured that the line was exactly the same. That line has not changed since then. And if you want to go back through the video and re-watch it, or please see it again. And now, and I believe that you'll concur that what I've just stated to you is 100% of factual.
This plan that you submitted does not have any structure or any, any.
The only thing that was added to that plan was just the restoration plans. That's sheet number two.
Well, we've looked at it over and over again. The impact areas are wrong. The planting is incon, it's not complete. You cannot plant 53 plants in an area that's 11,000 square feet of restoration. That's, you're not going to end up with success. You need to have, provide success of at least 80% cover when you're done. Not to mention all the fill that's in the wetland resource itself.
What fill?
You know, I'm not, I'm not going to keep going back and forth with you. There is, there is fill in the, there is fill in the wetlands.
I walked that line many times. Show me the fill.
When do you plan to remove the stockpile of spoils and where to?
We'll remove them as soon as you, you issue an approval of the plan. That's when they'll get removed.
Where is it going to be removed to?
It's going to be removed outside the 50-foot buffer zone.
Oh, it's going to re.
It's going to get spread out. Uphill.
We're not ready to approve this plan right now.
That, that's.
Up against the wetland. I mean, the riding rink is up against the wetland, yes.
Okay, that's, that's.
Anyways, this shows almost 12,000 square feet of area that's disturbed and that plan only shows 7,000 or so.
Okay, this is a first plan that was submitted. Was this submitted by Mr. De Souza?
No.
Mr. De Souza took all the restoration things off of, references off of the plan that we approved for the addition, as per we requested at the meeting. The plan we approved didn't have any of that information on it. It only had the addition.
This was Zenith.
And that Zenith's because.
Do you have a copy of the, the notice of intent that was submitted with that plan?
This? This was a, a discussion item with Mr. Schmee.
But how was that presented to the commission?
No, it was never acted on, but it was submitted to us as a draft.
Under what, guys, what, what controlling factor was that submitted to you? That's what I want to know. I want to know is how that became part of the record. I want to know if that was issued under a violation, if that was issued under a notice of intent.
It was under a violation. We have the list, it's a mile long here. Do you want me to read it to you?
Actually, no. What I want is, I want to know is how that.
April 6th, 2021.
Lisa, Lisa.
Dyton Conservation Commission sent a notice of violation to Mr. Motoso. June 1st, 2022, agent attended site visit, sorry, 21, agent attended site visit with Chairman Digit, Stephen Schmee, Mr. Motoso, and a family member. April 15th, 2021, owners attended the Dyton Conservation Commission meeting. May 20th, 2021, owners attended the Dyton Conservation Commission meeting. June 17th, 2021, owners attended the Dyton Conservation Commission meeting.
Was that plan here on those hearings?
July 7th, 2021, wetland scientist Stephen Schmee reached out to let us know the site was flagged. August 23rd, 2021, site surveyed by Zenith Consulting. August 28th, 2021, draft restoration plan submitted by Stephen Schmee, and I even gave you a copy of it when we met later. November 17th, 2021, draft wetland restoration plan and narrative received. December 21st, 2022, we received updated wetland restoration narrative by Mr. Schmee. March 3rd, 2022, meeting with Mr. De Souza, and at that time, I gave you a copy of that.
You gave me a copy of that plan?
Yeah, and I gave you a copy of the narrative.
Lisa, let's hold up for a moment rather than going through another page of this What we, what we're going to need is the paddock moved a bit further from the wetlands and more plantings.
Well, how much further on the paddock?
Tell them how far to move.
It's the fill too, the fill in the.
Well, the fill is, he's going to.
The riding rink and the fill, the pile.
Okay, but that can be written into the order of conditions.
It has to be shown on the plan.
Can you do up a plan for next month so we can finish this and, and settle, finally settle it?
How far would you like the paddock moved?
The riding rink is in a wetland.
Well, no, the, I guess the paddock is now, what, more than 50 feet away, right?
The paddock, no, there's a back corner that's, I'd say within five feet of the wetland line.
How, how far? Five feet of the wetland line? Okay, there's no build zone within 50 feet. That's the bylaw, no build within 50 feet.
Well, it's not a yard of building. It's a, it, it's a.
No, 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 that's a paddock.
That's a paddock.
He has both.
This is, then he's got the riding.
That's the riding rink.
The riding rink, so that, that's the one that's dirt. The paddock is.
It's a, it's a movable fence. You can take the fence and you can move a corner.
What about the riding rink? What does that consist of?
The riding rink is actually, those posts are actually in the ground. That's not easily moved. And that riding rink is basically in the same spot that showed up back in that 1997 photo.
Okay, you know, the paddock's got to get, let's say 50 feet out because that's going to be pretty stable? No.
You're not going to get 50 feet.
How far, Jim? 50 feet away from the wetlands?
You, you won't get it. There's no way.
Okay, tell me why.
Why? It's all grass. It's all, it's been, it's been usable yard since he bought the property.
Okay. But, you know, we don't want it on top of the wetlands. You said five feet.
It's five feet at that one back corner.
There's a stone wall right there.
And there's a stone wall right there, right at that corner.
Can we have this drawn up on the plan, but, but many, okay, what's going to happen to the soil? Many more tree, what, what kind of trees, Lisa?
No, 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 I am not designing this restoration plan.
No, no.
I'm not. They have to be wetland species. They have, there's a new.
We're not putting wetland species in an upland. You can get that thought out of your mind right now.
There is an entirely new wetland restoration replication packet that's provided by DEP that everyone needs to follow now. It's not, it's not as simple as going back and forth and figuring out right now. They need to do the calculations. They need to figure out the grade changes.
We're not installing wetland plants in an upland. I guarantee you that 100%.
You have, you have DEP brochures or suggestions on what plants to use.
There's a guidance document.
And those plants that are shown on there are within that packet.
Okay, but we need more than 50 plants and, and you're calling it 7,500 square feet. 50 plants doesn't do it.
Well, will.
Come on, 50 plants doesn't do it.
Well, what does, what does DEP recommend?
Well, 11,000 square feet?
Yes.
There's a table you can use. I'm not doing, doing the math for him. 80% cover. You need.
We're not doing 80% coverage of lawn.
To succeed as a wetland again, to restore this mostly.
Why are we going to restore a usable lawn area as a wetland? I'm not restoring a lawn area to a wetland.
Because we have a 25-foot no-touch that you guys worked.
The 25-foot no-touch came into play well after this lawn was already established. Yes, it did.
2002?
How long's this law been a house?
It doesn't, it doesn't.
Oh, no, it does matter. You cannot impose a new law on an existing house and lawn. You cannot do that. And I can show you time and again, hundreds of examples, not only from DEP, but through the court system. You cannot impose a new law onto an existing house.
But he added, he added a riding rink.
No, that riding rink was shown on a photo that was submitted to this commission in 1997.
The previous owner did have a riding rink.
Yes.
The same location?
Yeah, same exact location.
On this plan, you're saying you're willing, you're going to move the riding rink. Is that true?
That riding rink was moved, yes.
Was moved when?
It was moved when, last time we were here at the hearing, we had stated that that riding rink was pulled back.
Why would you work in the resource area without getting a permit?
Because it's a lawn area.
It's not a lawn area.
And it's been a lawn area.
Get into trouble.
It's a regulated resource area.
No, it's a lawn area that's been in use ever since that house was there.
There's lawn areas all around town.
Read the Wetland Protection Act. It's plain states, right in there that says they cannot take away anything that is pre-existing.
There was not any grass there when I went out there between the riding rink and the wetlands.
I've shown this commission photos when that house was already there, that that lawn went all the way to what looks like a lake right now, a smaller pond, where that pond was actually a cranberry bog, okay? So that's been lawn area for the lifetime of that house. And you're saying that my client cannot use his lawn area?
I want to show you this here.
I'll, I'll see you in court every day.
No, 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 no.
You'll lose this 100 times over.
That was not lawn on that side. That was not.
Yes, he did.
That was not lawn on that side of the riding rink.
That was lawn. That was lawn when that was a cranberry bog.
Okay, I'm going to throw out some ideas and you're, and you guys are going to either make changes to what I say or accept them or reject them completely. What I would like to see is the paddock moved more away from the, from the 25-foot.
Be specific.
The, well, let's say 50 feet, the paddock. Can that be done 50 feet? Well, how far?
We can pull that line back 10 feet. We can't pull it back 50 feet. There'll be no paddock at that point.
I want to see, see what happens with the spoils. I want it, I want it recorded where they're going, it says to be removed.
Yes.
I want to know where they're going to be removed. I want to see on a plan, a lot more vegetation than 50 trees and, and what you say, 7,500 square feet. I want to see a lot more than, than 53.
I, I have a few other things too when you're done.
Okay, do you, before we, okay, Lisa, go ahead, then I'll, then I'll call on the guys to speak.
So the soil stockpile that's shown on this plan right here, that's inaccurate. The soil stockpile is in the BVW. I've been there a couple of times. You can drive by and see it. It's a compost pile that's, that's been dumped there. So we also, we need.
No, he did, no, he does have it in the, in the BVW. He does have it in the 50 to 100-foot zone.
No, in the BVW, the Boarding Vetichated Wetland, not the buffer zone. It's in the wetland. So it's not shown accurately on this plan.
Okay, I want to see a new plan showing exactly where this stuff is. You could even show where your house is, the house. And I want, this doesn't, this doesn't show any of that.
Right, so at the last hearing that you issued the orders of conditions, you specifically asked for me to render this plan because at the, at the other plan, sheet one.
But this is, but this is, this is so hard because I'm figuring, I'm turning it all which ways to try to get, you don't even have the street on here, you know, where it is. And I'm trying to do the north, south and.
That's fine. I can do the two sheets. I can show you the two sheets like on the other plan.
Okay, but the, want to see the, I'm going to, whether it's compost or, or whatever the spoils are to, I want, I want, if it's really garbage, it's going to be moved off-site.
It's also composted and I was already approved to compost in the back right corner after that.
So you're saying you've got to move it to the back?
Have enough so that we can approve the plan, so that we're not arguing over.
Many trees are.
No, that's, that's going to be up to you. That's going to, you, you go to DEP website and you find it like Lisa said, it is not our job to design it for you.
I'm not asking you to.
Okay.
We want 80%.
I'm asking you, what do you think is a reasonable number? I'm not going to 80%. I can tell you that.
Oh, well, then it's not, then it's going to be successful after two years.
Well, you can.
Listen, that was one, and I will fight you every single minute of every single day since the beginning of that house.
Go for it.
You're taking away my.
Let's.
Listen, restoration also requires.
They're doing a constitutional taken right now.
Restoration also requires monitoring by a wetland scientist to ensure completion. So you usually do.
Well, that would be written up in your order of conditions.
There's no order of conditions for a restoration plan, Jim. That's why I'm saying it all needs to be on the plan. All the notes for monitoring.
This here is not, oh, it's the order of, no, your, your filing was on the, on the garage.
No.
So you, so you have your order of conditions.
For the house.
For the house. Now you're doing restoration. We just want it done right.
So do I.
But it.
But at the same time, I'm not going to turn my client's grass into a wetland. But at the same time, I'm not gonna turn my client's grass into a wetland. I'm telling you right now, everybody can hear me, right? I'm not turning my client's usable yard into a wetland.
No, but we're trying to restore our 25-foot no-touch buffers.
You're trying to restore a bylaw that you're imposing on an existing lawn that was there prior to your bylaw.
Retouched and more touched. That zone, the 25-foot, there's no vegetation in that. It probably hasn't vegetation for 40 years.
Right, exactly.
Well, there's a, there's a manure compost pile there, too.
That's my whole argument. It's, that's been lawn for a very long time, before your bylaw was even in play. So now you're imposing a bylaw onto my client's property, you're diminishing the value of his property. You're doing what's known as a constitutional taking of my client's land.
Okay, uh.
Okay, but how about?
Okay, hold up, Lisa.
I understand.
I wanna, I wanna hear from the commissioners. Uh, I I know where you, I know where you stand, um, and.
I wanna restore.
It's not, it's not, uh, I'm not gonna say it's unjust. It's, um, uh, it's, it's precise. But I wanna hear what others have to, uh, okay, Dave, do you have any comments for this, uh, or, or based upon what I had said, or based on your own thoughts or whatever?
I have no thoughts.
Oh, you don't have this map to look at?
No, you guys, you got it here.
Oh, sorry about that.
I have an extra one right here. Sorry about that. Only three submitted to us.
I know the property.
So it's, so here's the.
Yeah, there's the rink right there. This is a stone wall right here?
Yeah.
The 100, that's the 50.
Here's the 100 here.
Yeah, that's what I said, the 100 there, and here's the 50 here.
Yeah.
So what do we need? This replanted here?
Well, where he's got it marked, maybe even more over here. Uh, but, uh, one plan says 1100, 11,000 square feet. This was the original plan. This one here has 7,500.
What's down in the front?
Right there in the front is a, uh, odd gravel. It's all odd gravel right now.
Um, here's, here is the, a previous map dated much earlier by a different, uh, person.
Well, that's much earlier. This is what we got right now, Jim, right here.
No, but, no, when I say much earlier, it's 21, December of, uh, 21, 2021.
Yeah, but this, this is what we're working with.
Yeah, right, so we're working right here.
Yeah.
This is where we're working right here.
I mean, this is a stone wall around the rink, right?
Yeah, and here, here it shows it right here.
Yeah, I mean, if you can get rid of all of this, you know, seed it and cover, and then put your bushes up there, the whole area, do this, what more are you gonna do?
Right.
Well, no, I mean, you know, like I say back and forth.
We're gonna pull the paddock away somewhat. Uh, we're gonna plant a lot more trees.
Yeah, well, what I'm saying, here's the paddock right here, right?
Well, it's, the paddock goes, I guess, into the, uh, well, what is it, into the 25?
Yeah, yeah.
So, so the paddock is not shown. I wanna see the paddock, I wanna see the drawing of the paddock.
There's a, a stone wall that comes up, and it, the paddock is just at the stone wall, and the flag is.
On this side of it.
Show it on the, on the new map. Show it.
And we also need site visits with stakes in the field. I want the 25-foot staked out.
We're, we're getting somewhere?
Hopefully.
We're getting somewhere? Okay, you're gonna, you're gonna show it on the map, you're gonna stake it out there. You're gonna have plenty of new shrubbery going in, and this is, for the most part, a lot of this will be, if it's, uh, uh, loam and everything, and you're gonna, if it's loam.
With compost, you can make it disappear.
Right.
You know, that would be good to bring up and plant.
We also need the wetlands' flags restored, because it's been a couple of years, so you need the.
I went out there, freshened those up when we staked out the house last year.
Okay, that's great.
All right, so that's what we're gonna do? Yes, we're gonna get a new map showing the, the site, and you're gonna stake it, you're going to put the, uh, on the map where the paddock is, uh, the soil to be removed, or how it's to be removed, where it's gonna go.
Monitoring notes.
Okay.
We need a contract with a wetland scientist.
Well, I don't know about that, but.
Well, we do, because I'm only part-time.
I'll go from there, because.
Did we get somewhere with this? You know exactly what we're looking for?
We got somewhere, but at the same time, I'm, I'm, and like I said this already, I'm not gonna turn that into a wetland. That is usable upland area and has been since the day.
If you stay on the backside of the riding rink and the paddock.
I mean, let's, let's face it, I was back there, it's wet back there. It's, it's wet.
Clean up the soils, and I mean, move your compost.
All right.
Charlie, you all set?
Yes, but, you know, we toss around this no-touch zone. We don't have a 25-foot no-touch zone. We have a 25-foot undisturbed vegetation zone in our bylaw. There was no damn vegetation where he's, where they're talking right now.
Never was.
Forget that 25.
However, there was also no structures, and now there are. So it's a, it's a.
Okay, well, I think, uh, Charlie.
Does it say undisturbed vegetation, or does it say no touch?
I have the bylaw ready, huh? Just looking at it, actually.
What are we gonna do about these violation notices, because my client's not gonna be paying those three that were issued to him already?
Well, you have to pay them and, uh, submit the plan, until you submit an approvable plan.
You submit the plan, and, and we'll take up that next week, or next month.
Well.
Wait, don't, don't say no to anything yet. Uh, uh, Lisa.
Yeah.
Um, is something ready to go out on Monday?
Wednesday.
Okay, uh, let's hold up on that.
We issue them on Wednesday. We don't, we don't, you.
Sending another, uh, week of fines.
I'm not doing it.
Okay, did we vote on that?
We did vote on that, uh, two months ago.
Two install, but you hold up on it.
Uh, okay, I see what you mean, okay. Uh, well, what are your thoughts on?
Till we receive an approvable plan.
Okay, all right, then, okay, I will come back to that.
We've issued them based on until we receive an approvable plan. So if we need to have an extra meeting once we receive the approvable plan, so that he's not getting fined unnecessarily, I agree to that.
We approve the plan.
We have to approve the plan.
Right.
Okay, so, so next month, you're gonna come in with an approved plan. Uh, you may be getting more notices from the constable.
Every single notice that my client receives has, he has 21 days in order to file in court. So each one of those notices that comes into my client is a lawsuit on you guys, every single one of them.
Our bylaw.
I don't care about your bylaw.
We have not, we have not received, we have not received, you, you've had, I don't know how many notices here saying that this is gonna happen if, if, if.
Yeah.
We got more done tonight in the past 20 minutes than we did in the past year.
So then why wasn't my client invited before that first violation notice went out?
You were invited.
You were, I got it right here. I, I.
Yep, we sent you a certified letter, two certified letters. We sent you the most recent ones on my handstand.
Wetland violation, 7/12 wetland violation notice.
Go up to 23, Jim, next, turn it over. After the enforcement order was issued on December 7, 2022, then the commission voted to issue you a letter following up on the enforcement order.
February, March, April.
February 23rd, sent certified. I have the signed certified cards here. And then we submitted another one, follow-up letter, fines at a rate of $300 a day will be.
February, March, April.
No, he, he, he only received one letter.
No, he signed for them.
Well, that's fine. If you can produce those, that'd be great.
Wait a minute, let's, let's deal with solving this, and then we can solve that.
Well, I'm trying to solve, okay, we're gonna get you the plan, you'll, you'll have it next week.
Comes in, then, then that will solve everything.
But right now, there's three violations.
When we approve your plan, it'll solve everything.
There's three violation notices, and there's gonna be three lawsuits against the, the commission for those violation.
Well, you know, you're, you're threatening us.
I'm not threatening nobody. You guys issued those violation notices without due process.
Our regulations, that, so, so, so it works both ways. You think it works one way, we think it works another way.
I, I agree with you 100% on that. It works both ways. But I'm just telling you, for every violation notice that you submit, is it gonna be one more lawsuit on our end? Because that's the only way we're gonna get rid of it.
Okay, um, get the plan in good enough so that we can approve it.
Well.
You know, you know, in the past, you were at the point where you were so negative, saying, I can do whatever I want, that, that, uh, and then you kept on not really changing anything. And this is what brought a lot of this on.
Well, there's other factors at hand, but that's for another day.
Okay, uh, is there, okay, I'm not, I, I don't know if we should suspend until this is in. It's up, Bill, it's up, you can, I, I mean.
No, no, not, don't say, Bill, you can. I'll just sit here and cast my vote.
No, you can make a, hey, I, I don't, I'm only cheering it, I'm not, I'm not the commission. If you think that, uh, we should suspend, uh, sending fine notifications, um, and wait till the next one, we'll do it, if, if that's the vote, that'll be it.
But, but what is the, um, how do you know if, if you should start up again? I mean, once you stop.
We would know next month. If the plan is, is that minor, that miniscule, that we cannot accept it. He knows what we want. I think it's pretty, is it, is it evident what we want?
I know what you want, and, and like I said, we're, we're gonna modify it, we're gonna move, uh, the paddock. We're gonna, uh, show where the, uh, stockpiling is going, and then it's gonna come down to the plantings. And like I stated to you, I'm not gonna turn that into a wetland. I will show some more plantings on there, but you're not gonna get 80% and that become the wetland.
You know, I read that somewhere from, from, I don't know if it was DEP or from, it must have been DEP. You know, maybe they're talking about little bushes. I, I don't know what they're talking about, but, um, it's gonna be enough for coverage.
Well, it's, a lot of that back there is grass already, and so it is covered. You know, you're acting like it's not covered. It's covered. It's grass.
Untouched, un.
They mow the grass?
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's disturbed, then it's disturbed. It's not a.
Of course it's disturbed.
It's not an undis.
Lisa.
Our bylaw requires an undisturbed vegetation. That's never been undisturbed, again.
Okay, um. Okay. I brought up something, Bill thought of something. Is there a motion to suspend until the next meeting, fines?
But I'll make that motion, to suspend fines until the next meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so you won't, Lisa, make sure that, okay, who is that, who is involved in that? That's, that goes into, now, if the plan that comes in is.
So.
I'm, I'm just telling you, you know.
When the plan comes in.
You know.
I think what should happen is, if you need to meet with me, to review the plan, because Lisa's gonna be out.
She's only gonna be out, it's gonna take you a week to big up the plan.
Jim?
But I will meet, because I'd rather get a plan that we've seen, we've talked, and say, this is what we're proposing, you say, no, I want, I need more. And then I'll take it back, do whatever. So that way, by the time we get here, it's done, instead of submitting it and waiting.
The week you return, you and I will, will review the plan, and we can talk with them.
If we receive it.
We're not gonna go through this again. Next time, that's it. I'll just walk home. This is ridiculous. We have, uh, we have a order of conditions on a food development.
1996.
You have a what?
We issued an order of conditions on that property.
You mean an enforcement order?
No, well, yes, there was an enforcement.
Okay.
Yes. And the property, basically the same now.
You guys never brought that up at the meeting with me, any of the meetings.
At the last hearing that we were here, when you issued the order conditions, that was.
I can't remember the name of the first party, but they did violations and they did, uh, restoration.
Yep.
I, I need to ask the commissioner a question. I was, uh, I helped with the construction of that house. Should I excuse myself? I didn't, I wasn't privy to the.
No.
No, you didn't own it, you didn't.
I didn't own it, but I wasn't privy to the paddock or anything else that went on behind the house.
Are you still making money on that deal now, Bill?
No.
Then you don't have to excuse yourself.
I just charged them like $60 per hour to build a house.
Okay, so Lisa's coming back in a week.
Jim, you can, would you answer my question?
What?
Should I excuse myself?
No.
Okay.
You haven't had any, you haven't had any dealings with, with the owner?
With not, with not the present owner, no, but the original owner, I did.
Did, what, uh, did you gouge up the earth and dig up the wetlands, or?
Put in a foundation and, uh.
Well, that's nothing to do with the wetlands.
You made the cranberry bog.
What?
You made the cranberry bog.
We're, we're gonna end this for tonight. You're gonna have a plan, I don't know how long it's gonna take you, but let's say, uh, a week. Lisa comes back after next week. Uh, she and I will, uh, review it and maybe do a site visit.
Can I, can I just, so we don't have to go through this again, can I just be very clear about a couple of things? So we also need a narrative with the plan that explains exactly what you're gonna do, okay? So the restoration areas, what size they are, what you plan to do to them, specific to how many plants, um, so, how many plants, the exact.
Are you all set?
Uh, uh, trust me, not much escapes my mind.
Okay, a narrative. And I, and I can understand, I can see what Lisa's saying. You're gonna tell us where the soil's going to, what you're gonna do in the.
I'll, I'll have a narrative on the plan.
Very good, okay.
And in reference to, as everyone else always requires, and any other town around would require.
Okay, well, he's gonna do it.
A wetland scientist monitoring the restoration project.
Is that necessary?
Always.
Actually, you can have.
Well, that would be.
As well.
It's not necessary.
It's not necessary, because an engineer can do the same thing. Actually, an engineer has to certify it at the end anyway.
Okay, so you would submit the monitoring report?
Somebody from my firm would, yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds, uh, like, uh.
You're gonna sign off on the.
I will, I will, I will go into his office on Monday morning.
Yeah, all right.
If I'm not too old and forget. No, I'll be there.
All right, so we'll see you next month, then.
Next month, and that's, uh, May?
No.
June.
June 22nd.
June 22nd.
Thank you.
Um, okay, what else do we have here? I'm 30. Okay, Lisa, I think the rest of them are their update, agent updates.
Oh, yeah, I forgot, I'm still on, huh?
Yeah.
I thought it was time to go home. I was ready to pack up. Well, I'm, I'm gonna get us out of here sooner than that. Okay, so we've got Zero Horton Street, map 10 lot 53, enforcement, enforcement order issued November 28, 2022. Site has been flagged. We keep getting told every month.
All right, Lisa, these here that, that we have had no changes or anything else, let's just kinda skip over them. How about the letter to DEP by Mike Marlin?
I don't wanna skip over that one, though, I do have an update on that one.
Okay.
I spoke with the wetland scientist this evening, and he told me that he has tried to reach out several times to let his client know that he's skating on thin ice with the Conservation Commission, and he has not gotten a call back. So maybe we should, you know, maybe we need to talk about fining him as well, because that's a large risk, a large violation, greater than 35,000 square feet.
Oh, this is up by the church?
Yep. So you guys have to kind of come to a decision, maybe at the next meeting, about what we're gonna do if we don't receive some sort of restoration plan. Maybe we write a letter to them and do what we did with these guys.
This is the old railroad track we're talking about?
No.
2371?
No, this is Horton Street.
Zero Horton Street. This is up, under, goes under the power lines, but if you drive by and look to your right, you can't miss it. It's a very large area of disturbance.
This is Mr. Berbero.
No, it's not.
Oh, boy.
This is the one up by the church, you're going to, you're taking a left.
I reached out to the engineer and did not receive a response. However, at the previous meetings, they've come and they've told us that they were gonna submit something, but they haven't. So I think maybe we should issue a, a letter.
Okay.
We should say, if we don't receive something by such a date as we did with Mr. Moitozo...
We'll just take further action.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I'll issue the letter when I get back, if you guys wanna vote on it.
Yes, that's okay.
As long as Charlie's not gonna walk home.
I'll drive it, Charlie.
Okay, so I'll issue the letter if you guys wanna vote on me issuing a letter.
Yes, maybe motion that you would, issue a letter to the applicant, or the...
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. No update on, oh, update 23, 2371 County Street, Mr. Mullen did reach out to DEP, and he was able to speak with someone there, our...
An AI?
I, I do know that McCott has retired, so good for him. Supposedly, we are going to be having a call of some sort with Mr. Mullen. I thought it was gonna happen today, it never happened, so maybe it will happen on my vacation. So we'll see. There's an update there, skip the next one, because they filed with us and they're on continuance. Berbero, no update for Zero Horton, 2050 Horton, Mr. Brimmer. As I stated, he hired outkill engineering to do a, a plan, a draft plan came into me. We do have to make sure that it meets all the requirements of DEP as outlined in an email from DEP. So that'll be happening. No new update on Zero Williams. 1861 Somerset Ave, Dave Phillips and I were there today. Dave, you wanna report that?
Yep, we measured his no-touch zone, and he's good to go.
He installed the fences outside of our buffer zone.
It kinda, it kinda looks from the road, it kinda looks odd, like he's doing something wrong, but he's, he's doing what he's supposed to do.
Where is this?
Fixing his...
Right in back of 1712, Giorgio's.
That's how I know it's still Giorgio's.
Oh, okay.
So he's gonna send me updated pictures, it should be done in the next couple of weeks. He's also gonna put some of our placards at the 25-foot undisturbed...
Vegetation zone.
Vegetated buffer.
Yes.
It's gonna be hard to get the no-touch.
It's a big difference.
Next, 771 Hart Street, they have seeded, they removed the fill, they've graded it and seeded, so we really don't have a violation there anymore that can come off the agenda. Getting somewhere. 1940 County Street, 508 Customs. I reached out to Outback Engineering again, and they said they did flag it, and they are in the middle of preparing a plan. So it's the same report as last month. 880 Hart Street, we do have an update. I spoke with the son-in-law today, I asked for an update, told him he was on the, they were on the agenda. Since they had it flagged, I think the beginning of April, the end of March, they've determined that they really don't have any room to put their, their cattle, and they're gonna, they located the cattle in the backyard. And he asked, "What's next?" Because we did cut some vegetation, what should we do? I said, "Well, that's gonna grow back." So leave it alone, and we'll monitor it this growing season, we'll monitor it next growing season. He asked about some holes that are in the regulated areas that were previously put there, some telephone poles, and should he remove them? I said, "It's okay at this time." If, if you guys wanna make him do that, we can, we can move forward. But they're working with us, which is great. 700 Main Street, we are still due for a site visit. Mr. Phillips was out for a bit due to his bereavement of his father, so he wants to go with me. I don't know if anyone else wants to go with me, but we're gonna go take a look at that one still. I need to do that.
Echolent?
Yeah. And 670 Main Street, I haven't heard back from them, I don't know if they reached out to the Stormwater Committee. Do you know if they reached out to you guys?
670?
Yeah, or 700, 700 did.
What's the last name on that?
Well, Eldakin is 700, and 670 is LePage.
LePage, okay.
Both of these, let me put it this way, I was contacted by a member of the zoning board, because he had concerns that there may have been some runoff that was connected to the Dyton Woods drainage system. And the zoning board is in the process of going to vote on releasing the bonds, the Dyton Woods. So we asked the zoning board, "Can you hold off till we have a chance to look at this?" So we didn't get up there to look at it, but came up yesterday at the Stormwater Committee meeting. And based on what was said by members of our committee who are familiar with the area, consensus was, notify the zoning board, this has got nothing to do with Dyton Woods. They can do whatever they are obligated to do relative to bonds. Stormwater Committee are working with, this is Caldonia, there's gonna be an inspection, because there was supposedly, allegedly, or some runoff that was a contamination of the roof. We will look into that, but it was initially because of the bond being released from Dyton Woods. So I left a message for Mrs. Easterday, that our committee says got nothing to do with Dyton Woods, so probably we should have to do it. And Stormwater Air Force issued a site visit and see if there's anything up there, whether it's a stormwater violation or whether it's climate, so I'd say put it on the agenda for the next meeting, because that's what we're gonna do.
Okay.
Okay, Williams, 1420?
I don't have an update for Mr. Arujio either.
Okay, all right, well, that, we, we know that that's gonna, they get a lot of trucks going back there, but that, that's, I'm sure, is being taken care of, or will be.
I think so too, yeah. So I, I, if I had his email or his phone number, I could reach out to him. Nancy, I don't know if you could share that, if you have Mr. Arujio's information, besides me just going over to the shop.
You're talking about Clearway solar?
No, talking about Mr. Arujio.
1520 Williams, it says Clearway solar.
It's, no, it's him, it's, it's, it's not...
The dirt pile...
1420 is on because of the dirt pile, which has to do with his farming practices.
All right, so the conclusion is you're talking about Clearway solar. It's got nothing to do with, I'm reading something about the site is Clearway. You're asking me to talk about the dirt pile?
My agenda doesn't show anything about Clearway.
Wait a minute.
Last item I got says 1420 Williams, 10 lot 9, violation discovered on the property when conducting site visit at Clearway solar.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm saying to you, what are you asking me to speak about, the dirt pile?
I just signed...
No, I'm asking you if you have Mr. Arujio's contact information, so that I can contact him to get an update, because he came to our last meeting, and I don't have his contact information.
I, I contacted, because I know there was a customer.
All right.
But the, the bond stand does have a 669, I can tell you that.
Oh, okay.
Because I know they're frequently out of the...
Good idea. I just don't wanna have to bother him at work, but, okay.
Okay, one, one more final item before we close, this, I think it's the last item. I talked to Paul this evening about being a representative from the commission to CPC, and he said, sure, he would like to do it, we can tell him. I don't know if that has to be on the agenda for next month to...
Probably.
Or CPC representative, but I don't think we have a vote on it. And it seems like that should be an agenda item, and then approved by the selectmen.
Yes.
Okay, so next month, Charlie, that'll go on, okay?
I have one more item, if you guys wanna hear what it is.
Do you have time to be very vocal?
Last month, you guys requested that Mr. Mello write a letter to the Board of Health, requesting that they hold off on issuing building permits until we've had a chance to review them. That was reviewed at their last Board of Health meeting. However, I guess the chairman had questions for us and would like us to attend a meeting to further discuss that. I'm gonna plan to go, June 20th, was it? Let me look.
Is that, that's our meeting day, is it?
I think so.
Isn't it 22nd?
No, 22nd. So, let's see, I've gotta get into my email, just give me a minute.
Would you like to put a date down here?
I'm supposed to be getting ready to go to bed now. Takes me a while, you know.
Yeah, you don't know.
It's not terrible, it's not... Or text me at quarter past 12 in the morning. Well, you know, you know, that's when I see my email, around 7:30 in the morning. And, and after, and after that, who knows when I look at it again, it might be at night, it might not be.
I believe it's 4:30 on June 20th, so if you guys would like to...
June, you got to let me know.
Yeah.
Oh, June 30th?
20th.
Oh, I should, yeah, that's the night of the meeting, I'll be here for that.
Because my son graduates on the 15th, so... 4:30.
He won't be here until 4:12, I'm sorry.
It's, that's the Board of Health.
Oh, they're all set then, they'll do their own meetings.
Okay.
We're good.
Perfect. All right, can we adjourn?
Okay, is there one thing for the adjourn?
One thing for adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.